And Drew, I just want to confirm this goes into the computer in the panel room here?
Or, sorry.
She has a USB flash drive to plug in?
Yep, that should work just on the back, the back I O board.
Well, while, while we get the PowerPoint ready, I don't need to wait for it to, to come. So the topic tonight is legal guidelines for study sessions. And so I'll start by giving just a very quick overview of the open meetings law, because that kind of backs us into a lot of the requirements for study sessions. Feel free to jump in anytime if you have questions. My goal here is to, you know, to educate and help people understand what the rules are. So if at any point you have a question, please jump in. So our starting place is the Colorado Open Meetings Law, oftentimes called the Sunshine Law. That requires all meetings of public bodies to be open to the public. And the purpose is so that the public can witness the discussion of public business that's happening. It doesn't mean the public gets to participate, as you know, in those discussions. It just gives them an opportunity to hear it. So this law kicks in when you have a meeting of three or more council members or a quorum, whichever is less. So that's when you need to be thinking about these requirements. Meetings must be open to the public. That includes reporters, attorneys, other representatives. And, and like I said, the purpose there is just so they can hear the discussion, not to participate. So at a regular or special council meeting, that's where you could take action, official action of the town. At a study session, you cannot take action. So the purpose of a study session is just to receive information from staff or potentially other governmental entities, say the county. Say the town and the county are starting to put together a project and you want to get together and just talk very high level about it. What might this look like? What, how might it work? Those are the types of topics that you'll see in study sessions a lot. So you're not making decisions, you're not passing ordinances. You're just receiving information and kind of educating yourself about whatever the topic is.
Are these on slides that are supposed to be up?
They're coming, they're coming.
We're having a slight issue with the USB. Steve's just unplugging it, plugging it back in for me.
Okay.
Minutes, you don't need to take minutes at study sessions. They're much less formal than, than your council meetings. Great time to ask questions of staff. So that's kind of the general framework for study sessions as opposed to a regular council meeting. So now I'll talk a bit about the type, different types of things you might be talking about. So the town really has three functions. You have an administrative function, which is then delegated to your town manager. You have a legislative function, which is passing ordinances that apply to everybody. And then you have this quasi judicial function. And that's comes up the most often in land use and liquor license applications. And quasi judicial means that you are really acting like a judge. So you have a particular, for example, property owner coming to you and saying, I want to rezone my property. And this is what your code says about rezoning. This is the criteria. Here's my application. And then council acting like a judge goes and sees, do we meet all the criteria? If the applicant did, you approve it. Applicant didn't, you deny it. So it's a really confined process. As opposed to your legislative function, which could be adopting a dog leash ordinance. I mean, that you have tons of discretion in that realm. But once you're in this judge, you're like wearing your judge hat, that's when you got to be real careful. So what does that mean to be careful? And how does that work in study sessions? The biggest thing about these quasi judicial decisions, again, just think land use and liquor license applications, is you need to make decisions based on your code and the criteria in the code and based on the information that you receive at a public hearing. So this means you're not out talking to people outside of the hearing. You're not collecting your own information about the application. You're not out there counting cars, doing your own traffic study, just to make sure that the traffic study was valid. You're just taking the information at the public hearing and then making your decision. So in study sessions where this can get a little bit dicey is a study session is not the public hearing. So you're outside of the public hearing, but you're, you're talking about this land use application, this quasi judicial decision. So the important part there is that you, it's fine to ask questions of staff. You can say, you know, I'm concerned or I have questions about traffic impacts of this project. I'd like to hear more about that at the public hearing. So that tips off your staff to, okay, you know, we'll make sure we address that at the public hearing in our presentation. So that they can be prepared for any particular issues that are of import to you. You, the big don'ts, you don't want to express an opinion. Like I would never approve an application to have a building over five stories in this town. I mean, something like that, you know, you can't make the decision in the study session and you don't want to give anyone the appearance that you've already made up your mind. You're just in fact finding mode, you're learning about the project, the application. You're not, you're not drawing conclusions. It's really important that you don't make up your mind before the hearing. That's where, that's where the trouble lies. Another thing that's important is not engaging in conversations about the application outside of the public hearing. So you don't want to be talking to the applicant, you know, calling up the applicant and asking direct questions. Because it's just not fair. So the whole idea of the public hearing is that the evidence presented, you make a decision and it's fair, it's neutral, unbiased. So those kind of sidebar conversations can be really problematic. So just to wrap up, do's and don'ts for study sessions, especially in this land use context. Identify information and questions that you have for town staff or for the applicant so that they can be best prepared for the public hearing. Don't ask for information at the study session that's not already in the public record. Because then we're getting, we're getting, we're going off the rails there. We really need to stick to the evidence that we already have. So that would be the application primarily at this point. Any referral comments that you get from other agencies on an application? That might be something you discuss in study session. And then finally, you don't want to express your opinion about the application. That's the general lay of the land. Are there any questions?
Can I go off topic slightly? Because we're talking about quasi judicial matters. When we get to that level, the, one of the issues that I've, that I've had in the past is that if our job is to collect evidence, but we restrict the public from providing evidence and we don't allow them to present evidence other than maybe three minutes at times or, and in our code, it does, it even discusses cross examining at the public level. And I'm not exactly sure how that process would work because we've never done it. But so how, how does the public get a fair shot at expressing their concerns and providing their evidence if we're restricting them to three minutes?
Well, I mean, the three minute rule is a rule adopted by the town. And that's the most common time limit, I would say, that public entities have. So I, you know, I think the goal of the three minute rule is just to keep the meeting moving. Now, usually in three minutes, you can explain your position and your main concerns. But if you want to extend that time limit, you certainly can. And at a public hearing, the public has the right to comment. So they would come up and give their thoughts in three minutes. But if you don't think that's sufficient, you could definitely change it.
Mostly I think it's sufficient, but there are times when it's not. And I guess my bigger point is if our job is to collect evidence and the only time we can collect evidence is at the public hearing, then how, how best can we make that work without having a hearing that goes on till midnight?
Right.
Because some of this is really relevant. I mean, I used to be on the other side and I used to present evidence. And I would get shut off at three minutes and I would have two pages of evidence. So that, at that point, the council, the trustees at the time, didn't have the opportunity to really get evidence when we, when we shut them down like that.
You can always accept pub, or sorry, written comment too. So that could be another way that somebody could submit really comprehensive evidence or their position and submit it in writing. But it's, this is really up to the town.
Right. Okay. Thanks.
Let me tack on to that, since you, you've brought it up to me before. Apparently we also have a, is it an ordinance that requires during public hearings to swear everybody in? So the applicants, as well as those giving testimony that are not the applicants, that they're supposed to be sworn in because what they're supposed to be telling us is factual. Is that something that you see in other jurisdictions, other municipalities or?
But it seems reasonable. It's any problem with that.
So I used to be a planning commissioner in Inglewood for nine years or so. And everybody got sworn in.
Yeah.
Yeah. Staff got sworn in. Everyone got sworn in. And I always assumed that that was normal until I came here. And then nobody did. And everybody that I talked to said, oh yeah, we never do that.
I wonder if it's more common at the larger municipalities, but.
Well, it was 30,000 people. It's not really that big.
You could do it.
Yeah. And well, but our code addresses it. That's really what I think he's more getting at. I don't put words in there.
I have seen other jurisdictions where if you're going to speak, you have to sign a statement. Rather than just sign in, there's a piece of paper that you fill out. That's basically like swearing yourself in that you turn in before you speak. So you could do that. You could have everybody else be sworn in at the beginning. And then those who are speaking have to fill out that form if that would help expedite things, but still get to where you want to go.
I have a question because everything that I've heard here talks about evidence. But people express opinions here too, that may not be backed up with evidence. And it's still relevant to what we hear and how we govern ourselves.
So the time for that is after the close of the public hearing. So after you've, you've heard from the applicant, you've heard from town staff, you've heard from the public, then you close the public hearing and then this body discusses. And that part is so important. And one thing about using study sessions, they're an excellent tool for sharing information, which helps your public, your council meetings run more smoothly. So you don't get bogged down in some, you know, some issue that maybe staff wasn't prepared to address because they didn't know it was a concern. So it can really help smooth out your meetings. But we would never want study sessions to be used as a way to circumvent the public, the discussion and the deliberation here. So that, that is not what they're for. Because the public, I think they really want to hear council debate it, talk about it, bounce ideas off of each other, you know, what, what everyone's positions are and see how they arrive at a decision. So that's the time for it.
The other thing I wanted to go into is we've had several requests for people to come and do presentations on proposed projects to get a feel from the council and how that can be handled. What types of questions can be asked by the council? I know that they can't give a yes or no, but is, yeah, that looks okay. Is that okay to say? Or what can, what kind of guide, guidance can they give those people coming in with proposals?
Sure, that's a great question and it's a murky area. So this line between legislative and the quasi judicial, where you turn into a judge, the clearest place, you know, where that line is, is when somebody submits an application to the town asking for rezoning or asking for subdivision approval. Clearly at that point, you know, you were in judge mode now. But what Sheila's talking about is what if somebody hasn't submitted the application, but they're thinking about submitting an application or they're planning on submitting an application? And they come in and say, well, I'm thinking about this subdivision. What do you think? I mean, now you're really in an awkward position because they haven't submitted it, but they've already, they've told you that they're planning to or thinking about it. But they really want to know before they put all this money into it, do we have any chance here? I think it's fine to give kind of a very generic, sounds like an interesting use of the property or sounds like an interesting project. I mean, that's, I'd be interested in hearing more about it, something like that. I would not say, you know, oh, you definitely have my vote. Or no, I would never vote for that. We don't want to be that definitive about it. But if you are interested or not, I think it's fine to, to express that. And then encourage them to work with your staff on, on next steps.
I don't know that I would be inclined to personally want to put myself in a position like that. I am fine with us meeting prior to an application in, in what we've been doing recently with the engagement of our citizens and engagement of council members in separate meetings to ensure we don't violate, you know, creating a quorum by accident. But I would prefer not to have us put into a position where there is a sense of a yay or a nay. Have you seen this before, Sheila?
Yes, we used to do the, these in Fountain. We did them in El Paso County at some level. But yeah, we would bring in an applicant, bring in several. They would just do a little dog and pony show about what they wanted to do, just to get some general feedback. And then just to give you an update on what's happening as well. Like whenever we get pre-applications come in with some general, here's what we've met on this week with all these different projects possibly. And again, it's just general feedback. But if you don't like that, we can continue to do it. We just, we've had several people request. So I don't know how much time you have for individual meetings for as many people that want your time.
No, I get it. Maybe we do it on a case by case basis. You know, if it's a rather large project, maybe, I mean, the small ones are going to think they're just as important and they probably are. But if this is, if this is a project that's really big and it's going to take a lot of time up, we probably should give them the time. I know, I think if you, if you poll the council members, if they are willing to bring this up in public and everybody says yes, then invite them to, to come down pre-board meeting, right? So during like a workshop. And that way there's no decisions that could be made and we can just ask generic questions. Or make generic statements.
Do you have a council member that you would like me to run a list by? At least as a sounding board, like these are items that we think two by two, these are items that we think should be in a work session? Is there someone?
Everybody looks at steam.
And that might help keep those more under control, rather than just me making that decision, running it by.
There you go.
All right, got my answer. Thank you.
There you go. Do we have any council members that are online right now? I can't see them.
Yes, sir, we do.
Okay. Is it just Ken?
Councilmember, councilmember Kimble, you should be able to unmute yourself. I see your hand.
Yes, I'm on, I'm online there, mayor. Yeah, I'm really, to me, that's a slippery slope of doing pre-presentations to gauge and feel what we're thinking. Because if we kind of nod our heads without saying yes, then the impression's going to be or perception may be, well, they were, they were saying yes to this before. Now, now they're saying no. And now we get into a tuggle. I don't mind the smaller, I mean, what you said about large projects. I think, yes, they should be coming to the, maybe a pre-meeting like now. And smaller ones, just as important. Those can maybe be set up individually, like we've done before recently in the past. If we take a couple of the members, either, we do either one of two things. We either select members that have the time to sit in and do it or we coordinate, depending on where the project is in that area, either west or east side of 25, how we have it zoned up like we've done before in the past.
Okay. So Sheila, why don't we just play it by ear, it sounds like, and run, run it by Mayor Pro Kim King? And we'll go along with whatever you say.
Thanks. No pressure there.
Okay, what else do you have for us, Allison?
That's it.
So that, what, that was the slide deck that was sort of.
Not put up. Yeah, yeah, don't worry. I delivered all the information in the slide deck. But you, I could email it to you as well.
That would be great if you could.
Sure thing.
Make sure everybody has it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do you also want us to work on that one form that kind of like the swearing in of the public? Or is that something you'd like to postpone for a while?
I'd like to review, I'd like us to review the ordinance.
Okay.
And I'd also like to see how many other ordinances have it that are local. I could always reach out to Mayor Thompson of Thomas of Fountain. See, I'd like to see what other municipalities are doing before we jump into that.
I'm on the list, sir, so I can send it out to El Paso County directors and see what they have.
So it's, it's, it's actually in our code. So, I mean.
Is it in the, was it trumped by the home rule or is, do you know if it's still in effect?
No, it's, well, I'm pretty sure it's still in there when it talks about the public hearings.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll do some research.
The next item in the study session is review of our 2023 budget. And Mona, did you have, before we get started, do you have any, like this packet is on everybody's desk, but for those that are remote, is there a chance you can, somebody can send that to them so they can follow along or have access to it?
Actually, they receive a copy in the town council copy, town council package.
It's in the packet?
Yeah.
This slot presentation?
I mean, I sent it out to be included in the package. Did you not receive? If not, I can send a, a copy.
This, this is the highlight of what's in your packet.
Yes, in the package.
Right after the, the agenda. That's right. Thank you. Exactly.
You're welcome.
So mayor, what we wanted to do was we'd had some requests for a review of the 2023 budget. There, as you can tell, five of the seven members on here were not involved in the 2023 budget process. And so we kind of wanted to go over why we did what we did and some of the, be able to answer any questions that you have on that. And so Mona, please proceed.
Yes, thank you. Okay, so you also have it on the screen for the ones who are remote. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. It's good to see you all. We're going to go tonight, and you have hard copies of, of the, of the presentation, but also the copy of this plus the budget was provided hopefully in your package last week. So today we're going to go over the general fund, some general assumptions, an overview of revenue and expenses, the fund balance. And then in addition to general fund, we have nine other funds. So we're going to go over each one. So you can ask any questions if you may have so. If you're moving to page two, we're going to explain how the revenue in the general fund, it's being calculated. So we have a variety of revenue sources, but the largest revenue source is the sales tax. And the assumptions we have in the 2023 budget, we use eight percent increase over 2022. And this was a combination of actual and budgeted amounts. So at the time when we build the 2023 budget, we had about six months of actual data and six months of 2022 budget. So we apply an eight percent increase over that. And that's how we build our assumptions for 2022, 2023 general fund sales tax. Of that, as you know, 0.5% is going to the police fund. This was approved back in January, I think it was November of 2021 and implemented in January of 2022. With that, we actually have a different fund. It's called 2F Police Fund. And then also we have an IGA with Tri-View. So the business is located in Tri-View area like Baptist, Jackson Creek Highway. We split the revenue 50/50 per the IGA. After that, so the sales tax comes in with this, we deduct the police fund and then we deduct the IGA for the Tri-View. Of that, whatever is remain, remainder, one third of the sales tax will go to the water funds to be used for water projects. And then I provided a little bit more details on how much of that goes to what fund. So after you deduct all of this, about 45% of the sales tax that comes in will go to the general fund. We also have, like I mentioned, other revenue sources. So property tax, it's the second largest, it's about 1.2 million. And then you have a list of other funds, not funds, but the revenue sources. Now, talking about expenses, our town has a department need approach. So we reach out to each department head and we ask them what they need in order to run the, their department for the next year or for whatever year this budget is. And then we take their needs, we review with the town manager and, you know, he will push back perhaps on certain items. And then we have a little bit of back and forth with the department heads. And then we bring it back to you. In addition to that, we also have what's called a supplemental budget. So those are nice to have, but it will not necessarily prevent a department head to run their own department efficiently. So sometimes the supplemental request may be approved, may not be approved, depending on how the revenue is coming in, how the expenses, because we have to have some reserves at the end of the day. I'd like to go over some assumption we used in the 2023 budget. So all these assumptions started out in a different place, but this is where they ended up. So for health insurance, we saw an increase year over year of 3.58. So I just went up to four. Dental benefits were actually flat to last year. Sir signed it up being about 10% over last year. And then the salary, it's a combination of, so the 10%, 3% was COLA, cost of living adjustment, and 7% was merit increase. Retirement, we had an additional 3% town of moneyman contribution. We also increased the fuel by 50% just given how much the fuel prices went up in 2022. We, as you can see, this room has been painted and actually the, the whole location town hall. So we have for the paint and for the carpet, eventually this carpet will be changed. We have about 85,000, 15,000 for the paint and the rest will be carpet. The boardroom sound, 75,000 for this year. And then comprehensive plan for planning, we have about 400K. So now we talk about revenue, we talk about expenses. Where is the balance? So the fund balance in 2023, it's 1.238, 1,238,000. And this is 12.85%. The GFOA is recommending to have a balance. So this is reserve, right? So if we have more expenses than revenue, this is the reserve we have. GFOA is recommending to have about 15%. We were a 15% originally, but then some, that I can remember, some trucks were approved from the supplemental budget and the reserve balance went down slightly, but that was. And the reserve balance went down slightly, but that was um educated, you know, decision.
And, and remember, when we were talking about this 12.85% reserve for a Colorado town, you gotta remember, we have TABR, so we automatically have to put 3%. So GFOA is the Government Finance Officers of America. And so when they're recommending 15%, that's across the United States. We have a 15% reserve, just 12.85% reserve in our general fund balance, but we also have 3% in our um TABR fund balance.
This is the unrestricted reserve that we have. TABR is restricted, but um our town manager is uh right about an additional 3% reserve we have. Um, now moving on, I mentioned we have nine additional funds in addition to the general fund. So the first fund I'm gonna go over is the Capital Project Fund. And the first bullet point is just a reminder what this fund is for, was set up for. Um, and I know you can read, so I'm not gonna read everything that's on the slide, but what I want to draw your attention to, basically what this fund is gonna be using um 2023 is for the JCP project. So the revenue and expenses related in this fund will be related to that project. Um.
These numbers, these are, numbers are just for 2023. That's not the entire project cost. Cause the project cost is going to be spread out over 2023, 2024, and possibly some into 2025.
So the cost as of today, the estimated cost for this project is about 23 million. Obviously, you know, inflation and things may change. I mean, the amount may change, but as of today, it's estimated to be around 23 million. So the eight million you see, it's just for the 2023. And uh from what I understand, they're working on design and then constructions will be towards the end of the year. Uh, the next fund is the newly created 2F Police Fund. So how is this fund being financed? As I mentioned, a portion from the sales tag, sales tax goes into uh the revenue. But in addition to that, we have a 2.6 million transfer from the general fund. So in total, the revenue, it's about 4.4 million. Obviously, if the sales tax comes in better than budgeted, they'll have more money to spend. And then in terms of expenses, um salaries and benefits make up the majority of their expenses. Um, the next funds I'm gonna go over are the water funds. So we have a water fund and a two-way fund. Um, they both have very healthy uh budget. Um, the COP uh bond that we placed in 2020, um, it's used to finance a lot of big projects expected for 2023. And then I listed some of the big projects and the amounts expected in 2023.
And so those of you that weren't here a couple of years ago, when the board there uh passed our CLPs, those didn't have to go to the citizens based on the fact that we put up collateral for that. So we put up that collateral and the board approved $22 million worth of um construction projects in our, specifically in our water department. Uh, we sold $22 million for the bonds, but we only have $19 million for the payments because we had about a $3 million premium that we received off of uh the time we sold it. We sold those bonds at a 2.9% interest rate. If we just sold them today, we probably would have been closer to 4.9 to 5% interest rate. And if you see the interest payment on a 2.9 on $20 million, it'll make you crazy, but imagine it if it was at 4.9 or, or above. So we saved a lot of money.
So how much we pay back for this uh certificate of participation? This is what COP stands for. It's 1.3 million and that's principal and interest. We pay interest semiannually, um June and December. Community Development Fund, um the main revenue in this fund, it's, is coming from business licenses. So we have about 78,000 a year um from business licenses. Um, also the general fund transfers about 63,000. So that's the other major source of revenue. Um, what we pay out of this fund is basically the executive admin salary and some marketing, marketing events we have throughout the year. The next funds, and they're kind of similar in a way, uh Traffic Impact Fund and Stormwater Drainage, in a sense that they have the same uh budgeted expenses. We kind of budget around 100,000. We have not spent in the last couple of years 100,000, but just to be on a safe side. If we don't use what we budgeted, then we're gonna carry over these savings and, you know, for a year when we need to, to utilize. Um, the Park Fee Fund, actually, we have a big expense plan for this year um for the Parks Master Plan. Um, and then whatever we have left, we will carry over to um the next years. But this is the largest expense we expect to be made in 2023.
And you're sure about that? Yeah, well, most likely what we had talked about after speaking with everybody is the Parks Master Plan probably won't be completed in 2023. It'll probably be more like 2024 after we get the comp plan completed.
So Mr. Mayor, this is how the budget was built back in September, September of last year. Things have changed since then. And now that you asked me, it's, it's not gonna happen to how we budgeted. Um, okay, so the next one is Conservation Trust Fund. Um, this is based, the revenue is based on population. We don't have much going on um in this fund. We pay um we transfer from general fund 20,000 to pay a, a portion of the town gardeners. But that's kind of all we have. It's not, it's not much. And that's all I have for you. Um, you also receive a copy of the budget. There are about 71 slides. Um, the budget is also in case somebody's asking, um, it's posted on our, the town, um, and I can show you. Sometimes we receive questions from citizens on where to, to find the budget. It's on the website. See if I can share. Okay. So it's posted under Town Financials, uh under Finance and then Town, Town Financials. Um, also we file a copy with the state of Colorado. Um, and as you can see, there are about 71 slides.
It's in tonight's packet also.
Yes. Um, and that's kind of what I prepared for you tonight, but if you have any questions or uh
I have a quick question. I don't know if that would be appropriate for you, Mike, or?
Either one.
The, the Traffic Impact Fee Fund, you said 100K budgeted for expenses. Uh, the small projects or road striping, what, was that part of that used for Old Denver? You remember when we put um the sidewalks in? Was that used out of this fund or a different fund?
Um, so the sidewalk, the beacon light?
Oh, yeah.
A beacon light.
Beacon light.
Give grants.
Those grants.
We received 300,000.
Most of that hundred thousand dollars last year. Tom, what was that spent on?
Uh, we actually didn't spend a, a whole lot of it. We used sometimes to supplement the uh road striping program. And occasionally, like a few years ago, we rebuilt the uh the intersection of Front and Second Street. There used to be a huge dip there that everybody's cars used to drag. But we spent a good chunk of that money that year, along with some other funds to get that, that intersection rebuilt. It's very uh, I don't have a lot of leeway on what I can use that fund for. I can't use it for uh for sidewalks or for um you know, any park maintenance or nothing like that. It's, it has to do with impacting the roadways, so uh traffic signals would fit underneath that, striping would fit underneath that. I could do a small road project, but, but a hundred thousand on a road project is really not, it's hard to get a lot done.
Yeah, that's what I was asking.
So we've been very fortunate. I think last year you received a grant to
Yes.
Do some of the maintenance on Old Denver Road, right?
Yeah, late, late in the year, uh, I think it was C-Dot came to us and said, hey, we got a, like, I don't know what it was, like 150,000, if you guys can spend it in the next few weeks.
Right.
Do you have a project ready to go? And we said, yes, we did. And we put it together the next day and said, well, here you go. And and we got that done and got, got reimbursed for it.
Okay, that's
We applied for a lot of grants.
I bet.
To be able to do these.
That road work is expensive.
It is.
Does the, but then, so if you were to replace or repair, I should say, roads in the neighborhoods and, and town, uh monument proper from like water damage or snow, that wouldn't come out of this either?
What? It, it could, but we have a, a Capital Projects Fund.
Okay.
Where I have uh close to a half a million in there for road and a half a million in there for um a concrete project. So that's where a lot of our sidewalk, curb and gutter. Uh, I have a stormwater fund that I can fix some um, some drain inlets that might get roughed up.
Okay.
So we have a different resources, but when I get a project, I have to think about how to apply
Sure.
the different funds in case the, the auditors ask questions after the fact.
Absolutely. Okay, thank you.
You bet. Okay, if that is it, we will take a 15 or 17. One hand up still. I don't know if Councilman Kempel still had his hand up or if he?
I don't think he has anything to say.
Ken, are you there?
I'll let you say this. Councilman Kempel, do you still have something to say? Your hands up.
Yeah, um, can you hear me?
Nope.
Yes.
Okay, hey, um, I, I'm gonna email Mike. I have a couple of questions. I went through the, the, the seventy some odd pages for the budget. I just had a couple of questions on some of the numbers and what they were gonna be used for, so I don't want to get into it here. Um, but a real quick question um about the grants and how um uh Tom just mentioned, you know, the, he was reached out by like El Paso County if we had any projects ready. I'm just wondering, do we have shovel-ready projects um in line in case, you know, those funds become available again, so we don't uh, we don't lose out on those opportunities?
The quick answer is yes, we do. Uh, I can give you two projects that we have ready right now is a sidewalk project that goes along Third Street from the post office back to Beacon Light. We uh have applied for grants for that, uh but also Jackson Creek Parkway is definitely a shovel-ready project that we're applying for grants for.
Okay, thanks.
You bet. Any other questions? Okay, now we will take a 15-minute recess before we start our regular scheduled program.